Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, November 29, 2022. I have a meeting announcements. All meetings are live streamed on the City Channel, Pittsburgh's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
The move.
Second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And now our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be presented from Councilman Kraus for Sue Kerr. Is Councilman Kraus here? Is he online? He's not online. Okay, we'll come back to that one. We'll start with Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Oh, here. That's right, come on. Councilman Wilson. That's okay. Come on, Councilman Wilson, please.
All right. Dave and everyone from the Parking Authority, Parking Authority officers, and everyone that would like to come up. Okay. I'll say a few words before the proclamation because we have a very special guest today. So Monique Jackson did a very courageous thing while on duty, and I'm going to explain that here in the proclamation. But just to let everyone aware that this is, you know, something that I think is emblematic of people who work in public service. And without, you know, further hints, I'd like to continue. So whereas Monique Jackson was working on August 30, 2022, as a parking enforcement officer for the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, and whereas Ms. Jackson was working on Sandusky Street that day on the north side of Pittsburgh, and whereas while working, while doing her job, Ms. Jackson discovered an unconscious woman lying on the ground and called 911. And whereas Ms. Jackson instructed by the 911 dispatcher to conduct CPR until an ambulance and police could arrive on the scene. And whereas Ms. Jackson's swift and effective performance of CPR saved this woman's life. And whereas the Executive Director of the Board and the staff of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority recognize and celebrate outstanding commitment and performance of duty and commitment by the employees of the authority. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Tuesday, November 29, 2022, to be Monique Jackson Day here in the City of Pittsburgh.
Given a motion to approve in a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Congratulations.
Well, you know, I just can't say enough about, you know, what you did that day, Monique, and I appreciate everything you do for, as a Parking Authority Officer, because, you know, during the pandemic, even on the front lines, you know, we heard stories about, you know, what some people go through, you know, trying to do their job. So appreciate everything you've done there, and you continue to, you know, go above and beyond your job. So thanks for everything you do every day.
Thank you.
Dave, would you like to? This is the Executive Director of the Parking Authority Board, Dave Wonarada. Would you like to say some words?
I'd just like to thank Monique also for representing the authority in the city of Pittsburgh on a daily basis, very professional attitude out in the field, treating all the citizens of Pittsburgh with respect. It's a difficult job to begin with, but she does it to the high degree, especially on the August 30th, going above and beyond the call of duty and assisting a city resident who was in need. Thank you, Monique.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, and I just believe that security guards, enforcement officer, Officer Pariet should have CPR training. Thank you.
That was a very special day for Monique, and I appreciate, you know, your family coming. Would you like to come up and take a picture with all of us? Yeah, it'd be great to have you up here with a picture.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, you have one to be presented.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you.
I apologize for running late.
Yeah, I was right in front of you.
Good morning, everybody. So today, this is truly an honor for me to be up here to present a proclamation to someone that I have the highest respect for, not just as a woman and as a human being, or I should say, not just as a leader in the LGBTQIA+ community, but as a woman and a human being and her consciousness of the importance of being engaged in community. And her leadership is absolutely invaluable, and I don't know what we would do if Sue were not a part of this community. And so recently, Sue Kerr was recognized by The Advocate for Person of the Year. And those of you that may not be familiar with The Advocate, I like to say it's like the New York Times of the LGBTQIA+ community. I remember I picked up my first copy of The Advocate in about, it had to be about 1973 and 1974. I talked to Sue yesterday. She told me they went into publication in 1965. So this amazingly rich national publication has recognized the value that Sue Kerr brings to this community here. And we are honored to have her here with us today to bring her up and mention her service in this award. So would you please come up and bring everybody with you that you have and? Morning. It's really good to have you here. All right, we good? All right, let's do it. So whereas Sue Kerr was born on October 22, 1970, in West Smithlin, PA, and earned an MSW from the University of Pittsburgh and a BA in Political Science from Marymont University. And whereas Sue became a resident of Pittsburgh in 2005, when she moved in here with her wife Laura Dunhoff, who is here with us today, with whom she has fostered over 25 cats in the north side. You already have won my heart. Whereas Sue is a gifted writer and in 2005 established the award-winning blog, The Pittsburgh Lesbian Correspondence, which acts as a messenger of many local LGBTQ stories to her, in particular documenting the campaign of terror targeting trans neighbors through a series of over 250 memorial posts honoring the victims' lives and acknowledging their deaths. And whereas she established the hashtag #ProtectTransKids Project in 2022 in response to the harassment of black trans teenager girl by a neighbor. And whereas in 2020, Sue co-founded the Pittsburgh Mask Project to support the queer and trans community during the pandemic, distributing tens of thousands of face masks and other supplies throughout the region. And whereas in 2021, Sue worked with the community leaders to develop and establish the Pittsburgh LGBTQ charities to raise community awareness and promote grassroots engagement for neighborhood quality of life, animal welfare, anti-poverty, and LGBTQ+ issues in Western Pennsylvania, and currently serves as the Board President. And whereas in 2021, she was elected unanimously as one of the three inaugural co-chairs of the LGBTQIA+ Commission, which advises city government on issues pertaining to the Pittsburgh LGBTQIA+ community and which acts as a resource to create dialogue by elevating our voices and advancing communication between the community and city government. And whereas Sue has been an outspoken critic of the decision of eight Pittsburgh radio stations to air the 60-second anti-transgender ad targeting youth and worked with advertisers and community members to put ads, pull the ads from seven of the eight radio stations. And whereas Sue was named one of the 12 People of the Year by The Advocate, a prestigious national publication serving our community since 1967, which uses its annual People of the Year issue to honor the LGBTQ+ changemakers and culture shifters that have had the most influence on our world. And so now therefore be it resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh thanks Sue Kerr for being a fierce, passionate, lifelong advocate for our community, for working tirelessly to amplify the voices of our community and individuals, and for being a consistent source of support for so many vulnerable communities. And be it further resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 10, 2022, to be Sue Kerr Day here in the City of Pittsburgh.
Given a motion to approve in a second?
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Thank you. Congratulations.
This is really quite an honor, and I really appreciate it. But I do have to say the other honorees in The Advocate chose were President Zelensky in Ukraine. He couldn't be here today. And Beyonce. So I am a girl from West Smithlin who grew up to be on a list with Beyonce, and she's right next to me in the magazine layout. So that's quite exciting. I am very honored to have had all these chances to serve the city. And I do want to just, the only person I really can thank right now is just, is my wife Laura. She's not there. Bruce is not my wife. And who has just made it possible for me to do all these many things. And who kept this a secret from me until yesterday. The transgender community is under brutal assault every single day in our nation and across the world, and right here in Pittsburgh. And I will never be able to stop saying that we have to protect trans kids and trans adults. I specifically want to mention Angel Nayera, who was murdered in Alacquippa on November 11. She was 36 years old. There's been no progress made in the investigation of her death. Amari Lay, who also goes to be at Miara, was murdered on January 1 in 2022 in Wilkinsburg. No investigate, no progress on solving her death. Three weeks ago, a 12-year-old trans kid named Jake from Homewood is now out homeless in the street, missing. No one knows where he is. So how do we lose a 12-year-old? And I don't think if Jake were a white cisgender kid that that would have happened. So I am asking everyone here to please resolve to what you can to help those who are still with us and bring them home safely, and also to create changes so we aren't grieving so many people. It's an honor to be able to speak for them, and I'm very sad that I have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, I just wanted to say congratulations, and it's truly impressive that we didn't know about the layout until you told us. So thank you that, and you deserve to make that list. You have been a fighter in the streets, and you've been standing up for all of us and for our neighbors. So I just want to say thank you.
Absolutely. I'm going to get her autograph. My son loves her. Thank you. And now we have two to be read into the record for myself, Madam Clerk. And our Madam Clerk is joining us from home. She's ill, so we hope she gets better soon. But she's such a trooper, she joined us from, via Zoom. But we are actually very fortunate to have Ashley here as well. So I don't know who's reading it.
President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 3, 2022, to be Demolition Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Given a motion to approve in a second.
The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. And then the next one? I'm sorry.
Council President Smith also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, December 1, 2022, to be Mattie Patton Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Given a motion to approve in a second?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Proclamation's are approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. When we have the first speaker, please. And the first registered speaker that I have is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Hoover, and The Hague in Belgium, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligence社社, dot org. A concern of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, USA City Council is meeting presidiation, presider actions, valuation, as far as I'm concerned, PAE. I say the following as facts regarding the oversight of the pre-agenda part of the Pittsburgh City Council regular meeting at 10:00 AM, 21 November, 2022, focusing on free speech, FS, in public comment, PC1. The presider, Reverend Ricky Burgess, stumbled around into amend agenda action with no amendment content that I could tell. PAE 0 to 10 scale, 0 to. The presider fumbled with the names of proclamation recipients and proc content, PAE 0. 3, the presider, whose freedom of speech should not be censored, rumbled out critical comment on my public comment. 3A, RLM recognized the exceptional accomplishments of both intersectionalist black African women PhDs, Doctors Kiara Bridges and Kimberly Crenshaw, and intersectionist black African woman PhD, Dr. Condoleezza Rice, the former stressing the necessity of scriptive valences to aggregate equity. I disagree. The latter accenting achievement values to affirm equality. I agree. 3B, RLM said that an intersectionalist example is, quote, "Katanji Brown Jackson filling a U.S. Supreme Court seat because Biden promised a black woman," unquote. 3C, the presider, a black African-American man, postRLM PC falsely stated that saying that Katanji Brown Jackson is not qualified for the U.S. Supreme Court is not true. Reverend Burgess's comment on RLM's PC is itself not true. It is anti-information. It is a lie. PAE value minus 10. The RLM PC today, 29 November, 2022, will be texted to the Inter-American Human Rights Commission for violations of the free exercise of speech during public comment in meetings led by Pittsburgh City Council Meeting Presiders 2010 to 2022 and transmitted via the Pittsburgh Information Intelligence Network immediately.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Zaitsov. Elena, is she on? Yeah, I see her.
I'm Elena Zaitsov. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland. Today, I'm addressing you regarding Bill 2022 0592, the zoning portion of the Oakland Plan, which will be before you for a vote. What I have learned during the process of the Oakland Plan is that city planners and the Planning Commission did not care what this plan did to the Oak Cliff neighborhood. Oak Cliffers were lied to by city planners, as we were told residential parcels in Oak Cliff would not be rezoned. Please amend the bill to remove parcels 28P27, 28P33, 28P36, and 28P9 from UCMU. Is it a coincidence that all are owned by the same developer? The owner will see an economic benefit while Oak Cliffers won't be able to see anything as we get walled in. The Planning Commission voted to recommend UCMU despite the fact that some members said they needed more time to understand it, but would trust City Council to do the right thing. At a later meeting on the Oakland Plan, it became apparent not all Planning Commission members realized what was actually in UCMU. Oakland residents deserve better effort than that. Do you, as City Council members, care what happens to the Oak Cliff neighborhood, even if it isn't in your district? I'm asking you to care and to do the right thing for us. At the public hearing in September, all three Oakland RCOs, as well as the University of Pittsburgh, had issues with the plan. That tells me a lot more work is needed. I realize my questions won't get answered, but please consider them. Why is it okay that Oakland residents lose the protection of residential compatibility while other neighborhoods still have it? Recently, a Shady Side neighborhood was able to have a development change because of residential compatibility. How can it be legal that we don't have the protections other neighborhoods have? Why is it okay that residential parcels are going to be rezoned? Please remove parcels 28P27, 28P33, 28P36, and 28P9 from UCMU, as well as Wellsford Street. Why is it okay that UCE zoning on the Boulevard of the Allies from Halcat towards town allows buildings 210 feet high? It's right across from a residential Oak Cliff, and we'll wall it in. It needs to be changed to UCMU. Again, I ask for your consideration for long-term tax-paying residents. The Oakland Plan has two parts, suggestions that could be beneficial to residents that are unfunded, have no legal backing or assurance they will happen, and the zoning before you, which is beneficial to developers and is definite. My final question to you is this, why the rush to benefit the developers to the detriment of your constituents? It is within Council's power to make amendments benefiting residents. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Theresa Compratore. No, not here. And our next speaker, and I hope I pronounce this correct, Atan T. Kai Inchab. And I'm going to spell it. A-T-A-N hyphen T-I apostrophe hyphen K apostrophe I-N hyphen C-H-A-B. You hear? No? Okay. Online?
I was only listening in. I was not, I didn't request to speak. I apologize for the misunderstanding.
No, that's okay. Thank you. Thanks for joining us this morning. And we have exhausted our list of registered speakers. Therefore, we're asking, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? After him.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
How many times I've had the privilege of coming to this podium and spoken or addressed the subject of new thinking. If A doesn't work, try B. If B doesn't work, try C. If C doesn't work, that doesn't excuse you. It only says you're not putting enough power to the position that you're in. We have a problem, a small problem. How many months have we been without a chief of police? During that period, was there an increase in the number of shootings? It seems like it, even though I haven't done a statistical analysis. So what did I do? Because I wanted to be the mayor at one time. A very dear friend, former captain of the police force, Dan Quinlan, accompanies me this morning. And we, in our discussions, have developed a plan that will cut, in our belief, 25% of the death rate from shootings in Pittsburgh. 25%. And you'll say, well, come on, Les. Let's go. Let's do it. Let's do it. The answer is no. You haven't lived up to your vote from 2003. Not even so much as a phone call to say thank you for your participation, for all the years that you came down to these meetings. And you want me to take you at your word? Put six grand on the table and pay the old bill. And we'll go to work with the cooperation of the police department and a man who has 55 years of experience to bring to the table. You want to keep doing it the same old way and get the same old result? More deaths by shooting on our streets? I thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers wishing to address city council?
I would like to undertake the moment to introduce my associate.
Your time's expired, Mr. Your time's expired. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you. My name is Dan Quinlan. I'm a retired member, 55 years of service with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, retired as a commander. Most of that time, I supervised either a sex assault unit or the homicide unit. Both Les and I have been concerned about the number of violent shootings and deaths, particularly in public locations. What I'm recommending is that the police have to get out of the vehicles, have to walk the streets, as I did many years ago, to have more contact with people and to be in situations where they can stop these crimes from happening, whether it's breaking up the crap game or getting rid of the boozers or shutting down the bars at their particular closing time. Particularly up on Heron Avenue, there was a problem. There were several bars that went late. Problems happened. But once the police got involved and told the bar owners they have a right to run a business, but at 2:00 a.m. last drink is served, and then it's time to close and get everybody safe and back home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Victoria. I live in Hill District. I have a problem. I'm just a regular citizen. I'm not with no group or anything. I've been having a problem about housing. I've been working now, I'm 61 years old, I'll be 62 in January. I've been working now since 1979, paying taxes to the city of Pittsburgh. I lived in the Hill District all my life for a matter of three years when I got married and moved to Georgia. When I came back from Georgia, I still lived in the Hill District. I own property in the Hill District. I paid all kind of county taxes and city taxes, as well as working and paying my school taxes and library taxes. Recently, I had lung cancer in 2010. So I'm a lung cancer survivor. And lately, in July, I caught COVID, and it compromised my lungs, so my breathing is messed up. I recently got Section 8 back in 2015, and I found the Section 8 apartment right in back of Lavelle Real Estate Company on Center and Wallace. Now, where I live at, it's a two-story apartment building, and when I get to the top of the steps, I gotta catch my breath and take my inhaler and everything. So I applied for Beffer Hill Apartments, and my application came through in July of 2021. They showed me apartment on the second floor in the old Whiteside Road complex. I told the young man that I didn't want it. He said I would have to go back on the waiting list. I said, I don't want up in that area, and I can't do the steps. Well, you gotta go back on the waiting list. I said, okay, because I'm on the second floor and I like my apartment. And so I did. And recently, I've been contacting him. He showed me two or three different places on the second floor. And I told him, no, I said, why can't I live along Beffer or Webster Avenue where there's trees on a first-floor apartment? My brother got one on the second floor. And he said, no, you gotta take what we give you. When your name get called, you gotta take wherever we put you. I said, wait a minute, I pay taxes. I don't think that's fair for me to have to go wherever you send me. And so now, he found me a place on Webster Avenue, like I said, on the first floor, along the street line. And I thanked him for, I never got to see it. He was like, well, we need you to get a rafter, because when it come up and it get ready, if you ain't ready, we gotta pass it on. So I said, if I get a rafter, I gotta get my landlord where I live at 30-day notice in order to get a moving voucher from my Section 8 people. So I did that. He's like, no, well, you gotta do. I got the voucher. I mean, I got the rafter. I gave my 30-day notice. It ends tomorrow, my 30-day notice where I live at. I'm supposed to be out of my apartment. I've been having complications with this man. Ain't nobody called me. Ain't nobody told me anything. So then, when he took me, finally took me to see the apartment, since he said I was a difficult person to house, I'm losing out on a public bathroom, because my bathroom is in my bedroom. So now, if you came to my house, you couldn't use my bathroom.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Ricky Moody. Would you mind getting information from her for us? Thank you. We'll send somebody over to talk to you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council?
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street up in the Hill District. That's the Katy where Irving's tires. I usually come down and, you know, most of the time, I'm coming with a problem or a concern. But I want to come down and tell you about a minister, a reverend, that you can give reverence to, not someone that pretends like he cares about people. This man is Reverend Dr. Cornell Brunson and Lady Rena Brunson. Very nice picture. Very nice picture. And they started a church in the bottom of our building. They say that you come fix at 6:00, 6:00 o'clock on Sunday, that they have Thursday prayer, and they have Bible study, and they have a Friday night service. I don't make all them, but I did promise that I would go every Sunday, and I have been going. I bring, I speak about him as being a reverend. You know, I came down here years ago, and I couldn't understand why we called him Reverend Burgess, and we didn't call the lawyers attorney or the doctors doctor. We call them councilmen or women, and he has to be called reverend. Well, they said, because he prefers that. That's what he wants. Well, I don't think that he should be called that, because he don't really treat the people, and especially me. When any time I came here last week, well, last time the city council had a sign, less I had a sign. It had your vote count, and then it had betterment. He who won't come, when we're speaking at public comment, he may be peeping out the door or standing back, waiting till we get finished, come back and screaming and hollering at me. I told him, get away, get up there and take care of your business, because that's what you're supposed to do. This man right here has taken, and he's harassing me. He's picking at me. He does that because I'm dark, and he's light-plecked, that colorism. He has a problem with dark-plecked people. I have seen, he had a student that came in here one time, and I said, oh, you're gonna get, you're gonna speak? She said, no, getting a proclamation. When she took her paper and she looked, she said, she turned, she was dark, she turned white. That dirty dog. She said, and she was in his class, and she had an argument with him about something. And because of that, he would not put her name on the proclamation, and she was part of the group. So you know, this man will do anything that he can to keep you from challenging him or going against anything that he might say. I want you to understand that I still feel bad about my five-year-old that came and spoke. When she got finished speaking, he said, it's not the time and the place for her to speak. This baby had been watching city council from the time she was born.
Thank you. My time is up. Next speaker, please. Is there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Please approach the podium. Please approach the podium, sir. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bill Neal. I am happy to come before you once again. Now in my 48th year of service to the city of Pittsburgh as a coordinator of programs for our community and our youth. Forty-eight years of unpaid service, I should add, as a volunteer. You may recognize the name Champion Enterprises that operated the Connie Hocken Summer Basketball League, Franco Harris Football Camps, Willie Stargell Awards Bank quit, and the Kenny De Redd High School All-Star Classic, all of which has been recognized as some of the top programs in Pennsylvania. There are several people that will follow me who will not speak of themselves, so I will make claim to them before they get to you. You will hear from Clarence Hobson, one of the city's all-time greatest basketball players on the high school, college, and professional level. And you'll hear from Otis Wesley, one of the city's all-time greatest football players. In the 263-year history of the city of Pittsburgh and 190-year history of the Board of Education, there had never existed a Hall of Fame ceremony that inducted such individuals, as I mentioned, in a City of Pittsburgh Hall of Fame. In the 263-year history, it never existed until eight years ago, when I created it. Achieving Greatness Incorporated is an agency that I operate now, and a mass of people formed a committee that now going into its ninth, potentially sellout year of 400-plus people every year for the last eight years, honoring 50 people a year, at the rate of which it will take another 19 years to get all worthy city league student athletes inducted into said Hall of Fame. We are still in search of continued support from city council. We want to thank Councilman Lavelle, Councilwoman Smith, Councilman Coghill, and Councilman O'Connor for their past contributions. But we've never had a collective joint venture for a program that serves the entire city. It's not a sectional program. Every past and existing high school in the city of Pittsburgh is represented. One would think that every council that represents an area that has a high school in it would contribute something. Some of the council persons in my presentations in the last eight years have contributed nothing, not even $100, while we service the community at no payment to ourselves and reinvest annually $40,000-plus dollars back into the community. We have people come as far as Switzerland, Las Vegas, Atlanta, Baltimore, Chicago, Texas. People come back home to be inducted in this Hall of Fame. Transportation costs, hotel costs, food and beverage, rentals, awards, gas, all that money goes back into the community, yet we can't get a collective response from the city of Pittsburgh City Council in totality. So once again, we ask that you will consider that and remember the names of Chuck Cooper and all the greats. And you all have a packet in your office in the next day or two.
Thank you.
Can I leave this for somebody to be distributed?
Thank you. Our clerk, Richard. Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Thank you for your work. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Any further speakers wishing to address city council?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Or I should say, good morning. My name is Clarence Hobson. I'm the former deputy director of the Allegheny County Parks Department. I retired in June from the parks from 42 years in Allegheny County. The reason I'm here today is to support Bill Neal in the championship, in the Champions Program. It was very important to me as a basketball player and as a citizen of Pittsburgh. I've supported Bill in other programs, and what he does for the youth and what he does for the city of Pittsburgh is unprecedented. I would hope that the council here would take that into consideration and just look at what is done through his programs within the city of Pittsburgh. I'm not going to hold you guys up any longer. I know you guys are busy. But I want to let you know that I feel that his statement of his programs being citywide, not just involved in one area of the city, is very important. And I want to thank you for this time.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Good morning.
Hi, everybody. Good morning. My name's Otis Wesley, and I'm a proud graduate of the city public schools. I graduated from Allegheny High School, which is now a middle school. When I went to Allegheny, there were 12 city schools in the city of Pittsburgh. I think there's probably about three or four left now. But I'm here to throw my support behind the City League Hall of Fame. And I was recently inducted in the sixth, the sixth class in 2019. What I'm here to ask is the city get behind Achieving Greatness and the City League Hall of Fame. All other areas around this surrounding area, the Beaver Falls, even Penn Hills, they have a Hall of Fame. But I take it that most people in this chambers have not even heard of the City League Hall of Fame. Well, I'm here to tell you that it's alive and well, and it's been going on, this will be the ninth year. And the next inductees will be held out at the Doubletree Hotel, December 17. And I'm asking all of you that can attend to please, please attend. You'll have a good time, and you might meet some people that you haven't seen for a while. And once again, I want to thank our CEO, Bill O'Neal, for getting this thing started. And we're going to keep this thing going, too. I mean, whether we have the support of the city or not. But this is for, to let our younger, our younger kids in the community to know that, hey, we have the City League Hall of Fame, and some of the all-time greats that are still around, I'm just lucky enough to still be here and hadn't seen guys like Hobson, Kenny De Redd, and all those guys play. All these, all these great City League players played in the City League, and they, and we deserve your support. Thanks again.
Thank you. And just for members, we sent, Sollyster Friesen is back there explaining how our grant process works. Next speaker, please. Yes, please approach the podium.
Hi, my name is Bernard Adams from Beachview. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I would like to thank this collective body for your unique ability to reach outside old outdated boundaries of previous councils, for the betterment of our community. I also want to share my sorrow as a child of God, daughter of a king, as I have been witnessing some harsh, sometimes racist words, seemingly personal attack towards some of the council members. As we collectively as a nation have witnessed reproductive rights of women taken back decades, I fear others may spoil this platform, our right to freedom of speech. I pray this, our rights, continues for our city and a nation collectively for generations to come. Having said that, I again implore you to find the funding for Beachview for the return of a recreation center, which Dwight D. Eisenhower, which through my research the last time I spoke, he provided. It was lost. It was going to be restored, and the money, the funding was taken away in 2003 for a bill owed to the county by Valerie McDonald, if the Post Gazette is correct. We also need the pedestrian crosslights at the top of Boast Ed, also known as Dead Man's Curve, and at the top of Coast. We need, we need this for our community, and I am so grateful that everything else has been happening in the community, the farming, that is an excellent, excellent. But we need a recreation center. Our neighborhood kids, many of which are generational, deserve to have this recreational center, which was there for their grandparents, for their parents. It's just gone. These kids are seeing it happen, and all the money being given to... These kids are seeing it happen, and all the money being given to neighboring communities, and it's not safe for them to get to. Thank you, and again, I, I am grateful for this right to speak here at this forum.
Thank you. Are there any, any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers.
Madam President, may I register eye votes for the, the final votes? Is it proper to, to do that at this point?
Yes, he can.
Yes.
May I have your excuse?
Yes, thank you. We'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Burgess. Thank you, Councilman.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1012, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Director of Finance to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into an amended sublease agreement or agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Western Pennsylvania for continued operation, Lawrenceville Senior Center located within Leslie Park, as originally authorized by Resolution Number 55 and 91 of 2011, at an overall cost of $198,000, and with the term expiring March 31st, 2024, and Bill 1013, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 318 of 2018, effective date May 14, 2018, in order to rescind the sale.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works, Councilman Burgess for Councilman, uh, Coghill, please. And we need a motion to waive the rules for that, too.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1014, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance and/or the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to execute as necessary an instrument or instruments entitled Preservation Agreement, a ten-year covenant to ensure the maintenance and preservation of the architectural and historical characteristics of the Hartsfield Monument in Allegheny Commons Park in favor of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, which has funded the restoration of the monument by the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy for the benefit of the public, and Bill 1015, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to commit future year capital funding for an award or awards to Masara Corporation, East West Manufacturing and Supply Company, Inc., Westmoreland Electric Services, LLC, and Wheels Mechanical Contracting and Supplier, Inc., for the build-out and construction at 412 Boulevard of the Allies. The additional funding needed beyond what has already been allocated is not to exceed $3,200,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam President.
Yes. We have a motion, we have a second.
A second, Madam President.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the bill will be, appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1016, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the 2023 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council Districts All.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1017, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 453 of 2002, providing for an amended lease for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police Headquarters located at 1203 Western Avenue, extending the term six more years and providing for the payment of the cost thereof.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1018, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to enter into an agreement or agreements with Gateways for Growth for the purpose of receiving a customized research brief on immigrant and refugee communities in Pittsburgh and a welcoming network general membership, and Bill Number 1019, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, Inc., for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $70,000 to integrate banking access into the 2022-2023 City of Pittsburgh's Summer Youth Employment Program.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 1020, Resolution Amending Resolution 211 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an amended professional services agreement and/or contracts with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc., by extending the contract through 2025 at an additional cost not to exceed $1,001,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1021, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Computronics USA, Inc., for three years to handle day-to-day maintenance and support of one-stop PGH, including to address any defects that may arise with the system and to diva, define service-level agreements for resolution time meeting the needs of the city of Pittsburgh at a sum not to exceed $1,224,482. Bill 1022, Resolution Amending Resolution 375 of 2021, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an amended agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Cohen Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon, and for consultation on development of fiber and wireless telecommunications assets and policy in an amount not to exceed $591,213.70, and Bill Number 1023, Resolution Authorizing the city of Pittsburgh to extend a contract or agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television for public access television services by extending the term of the agreement until December 31st, 2022.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Wilson.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Triple duty today. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have one communication.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill 1024, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police, or Nora Bola, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018.
Thank you. Have a motion to read, receive, and file.
Go move, Madam President.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then now we'll move on to any unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? The next, seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. We'll start, begin with Councilman Lavelle, Argina Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill 1006, Reported Committee on Finance and Law for November 21st, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 916, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Christopher P. Boyle in the Total Amount of $9,500 for Expert Fees Associated with a Litigation Matter filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania against the city of Pittsburgh. Bill 917, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gleason and Associates in the Total Amount of $11,184 for Services in Connection with the Case Filed. Bill 918, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Joyce Haines and her attorneys, Simon and Simon, in the Amount of $35,000 relating to the Full and Final Settlement of the Case Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Plea. Bill 955, Resolution Providing for the Sell of Certain Property Acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at Tax Sales, Items A through B. Item A, 3341 Milwaukee Street, and Item B, 7317 Monticello Street. Bill 956, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjuncting Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh, item R, 530 Janella Street, 4718 Monongahela Street, 238 Mansion Street, 1519 St. Patrick Street, 12 Quarry Street, 1232 Shady Crest Drive, 1024 Crucible Street, 1022 Crucible Street, 1204 Warlow Street, 0810 Street, 917 Morrison Avenue, 913 Morrison Avenue, 923 Morrison Avenue, 2450 Perrysville Avenue, 1234 Woodland Avenue, 2346 Atmore Street, 2348 Atmore Street, and 104 Pens Dale Street. Bill 957, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Opioid Misuse Abatement Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit and Expenditures from Said Trust Fund, and Bill Number 965, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of $90,000 to Support Youth Sports Programming in Each Council District.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to our next committee, which is Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Councilman Burgess for Councilman Coghill, please. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1007, Reported Committee on Public Works for November 21st, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 960, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a license agreement for a period of five years with two five-year renewal options in which the city grants the Allegheny Goat's Gate a right to utilize grazing goats upon particular city property and/or right-of-way in specified locations citywide. Bill Number 966, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $3,773.52, and increasing complete streets by $3,773.52. Bill Number 967, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing park reconstruction by $30,855.41, and increasing complete streets by $30,855.41. Bill 968, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing facility improvements, sports facilities, by $5,328.10, and increasing complete streets by $5,328.10. Bill Number 969, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing play area improvements by $8,832.52, and increasing complete streets by $8,832.52, and Bill Number 976, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Directors of the Departments of Finance and Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements or contract or contracts pursuant to the Act of October 29, 2020, PO 782, Number 96106, with the municipality of Penn Hills and or Tamian Enterprises to provide for the maintenance of East Hills Drive.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have been received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson's Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Strasburger for Councilman Wilson, please.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1008, Reported Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 21st, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 895, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with community-based organizations for community and economic development for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city and providing operating support for these groups and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $500,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill has been received. The legally required number of votes has finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1009, Reported Committee on Urban Recreation for November 21st, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 958, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education or another vendor chosen through the city bid process for the purpose of providing meals in connection with the 2022-2023 Food Service Program in the Department of Parks and Recreation. The total cost will not exceed $900,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that we, we passed this last week without discussion with the director, and I, I just wanted to acknowledge that this level has been flat for several years, and it's a, it's a wonderful program that was advocated for by council members to feed kids over summer, especially when they're not getting summer meals or getting meals at school, and there's been tremendous inflation, and like everything else in the world, there are additional costs. are additional costs. And there's some concern that this might not be enough to really fully meet the needs that we're seeing. And I just wanted to highlight that, especially because council members have, a handful of council members have expressed support for a food justice fund at the city and are, were actively looking to find the sources of funds. The mayor has proposed a $3 million allocation to seed a food justice fund. And it just occurs to me that this is yet another example of the, of the kind of demand that we're seeing and how fundamental food is to, to our citizens' success. So I just wanted to, to add that in since we didn't have discussion last week at standing committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other members wishing to address the issue? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaVell.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received. The legally required number of votes has finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 1010, Reported Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for November 21, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 963, Resolution Amending Resolution 824 for 2019, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an amended agreement with B3 Solutions, Inc., for Further Provision of Software Maintenance and Support Services, the Development of Critical Applications, and Possible Transition Guidance for some not to exceed $1,929,321 until December 2023. And Bill 964, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Healthy Outcomes, Inc., Doing Businesses' Balancing Act, for a Suite of Online Tools to Educate and Engage Citizens on Budget Priorities for some not to exceed $39,000 over Three Years.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Strasburger.
Madam President, thank you. I would like to make a motion to amend Bill 963.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, did you say?
The amendment is really just to change the title of the bill to make it clear per the request of council members last week.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amended, amended bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill's amended. And then now on the bill itself, the amended bill? Is there any discussion? All in favor of, seeing none? The bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaVell. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bill hasn't received. The legally required number of votes has finally passed. And our last committee of the day is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Inner Governmental Affairs. Councilwoman Gross.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1011, Reported Committee on Inner Governmental Affairs for November 21, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 961, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facilities Plan for 905 Bingham Street. And Bill 962, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewerage Facilities Plan for 716 Marlowe Street.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaVell.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nos.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. Council's budget hearings continue this afternoon at 1:30 p.m. with the Office of the Mayor, the Office of Equity, the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, chaired by myself, and the Office of the City Controller, chaired by Councilman LaVell. Council's Standing Committee's meeting will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, November 30, at 10 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. Wednesday morning, 9 a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at this council meeting, please register, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, Wednesday afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold budget hearings with the Department of Finance and the Department of Law, chaired by Councilman LaVell. On Thursday, December 1, council's 10 a.m. budget hearing will be, be held with the Department of Public Safety, including the Administration, the Office of the Community Services, and Violence Prevention, the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, and the Office of Community Health and Safety. And I believe that's going to be chaired by Councilman Kraus, correct?
Yes, Madam President.
And council will hold budget hearings with the Public Safety bureaus, including the Bureau of Police, the Bureau of Fire, the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, and the Bureau of Animal Care and Control. Councilman Kraus will also chair those budget hearings. All budget meetings are streamed live via the City Channel, Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. Is there anything from members? Councilman Kraus?
Thanks, Madam President. Is the mayor's budget hearing the first of the, of the hearings that are happening this afternoon? Do you know? I'm just curious. I have an event at 12.
Yes, it is.
It is. I have an event at 12:30. I have to be up. But I want to make sure I'm back in time for that. And I would like to collectively send get well wishes to our clerk. It's clear that she's under the weather. And I appreciate that she's pushing through and being with us today by Zoom. But, Madam Clerk, I hope you feel better.
Thank you. I think we all do too. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else from members? Councilman Burgess.
So I had a chance to travel a little bit over the holidays. And I met a preacher, pastor from Maryland. We began to chat. And he began to tell me why he supports Donald Trump, and why, although, you know, he has some problems with him as a person, he supports his policies, and how he'll probably vote for him again if he runs for reelection. Earlier in my career, when I worked in corrections and worked in the jails and in Western Penn Entry, I had the chance to meet people who had committed various, very serious crimes, including multiple murders. And I saw some of them change their life, that their past did not define them. They, and so I've learned that people can be different than their past, that they can say and do and make mistakes, but be transformed. However, recently, you know, Donald Trump had dinner with Kanye West, goes by Ye, and Nick Fuentes, who is an anti-Semitic, a holocaust denial, denier. And I just, it's so sad to me. I do not know Trump personally, never met him. But he does things to accept the worst instincts of our country. Those, those, those who are racist, sexist, homophobic, xenophobic, Islamic-phobic, anti-Semitic, he, he embraces those beliefs, allows them to cluster under his umbrella. And so we who are Hillary Clinton-called those activities deplorable, and I, I agree with her. And so we stand, those of us who are believers of this country. These beliefs have always been in, is part of America. It is not, is not, unfortunately, it's not, it is not something important. It has been part of our country almost from its beginning. But I do think that people, I am, I am thinking more about people's potential to be transformed and the potential of a power greater than to be transformed. And I, I do think that we should, I'm trying, and we should stop spending our lives being anti-things, but spend our lives being for things. Certainly, you know, we're going to see the Trump movement and Make America Great, which actually is a code name for Make America White Again. That's really what they're saying. Go back to the time when African-Americans were exploited and segregated. Go back to the time when women were relegated to, to, you know, bedroom in the kitchen. Go back to the times when gay and lesbians had this hide their sexuality and were unable to marry. Go back to the time of, of lynchings in this country when they were prevalent. Yeah, that's when he says go back, Make America Great Again, he means make it back to the 50s. Go back to the time that some of the worst things in our history have occurred. But, but, but I, I left, even that conversation, and we talked, and I did not tell him at length my own view, but I, I do think of hope. There are, as I engage young people, those who are under 40, I think they are different than us, right? I think they don't, I see my own children. I don't think they carry that same baggage that I carry. You know, I, I, I think that there's hope, that we may get to a better place over the next 20, 30 years. But unfortunately, Trump represents some of the worst instincts of our country. And so I just wanted to admit it, to, to, to condemn bringing white nationalism into the forefront of American politics. I denounce that. But also say that I do think, and I said this again, I've said this earlier, I believe Trump's people, Trump's message is the death rose of that sort of racism in our country. We are going to be a place where the majority of our people are brown or black. That's a reality. The majority of this country, very soon, will be brown or black. And so what you're seeing now is the death rose of that sort of blatant white male hatred and rage. And there's been books about that. But I, I come to a place where I think we are, we are, we can be better than this. We are going to be better than this. Council is getting better than this. Our city is getting better than this. Our state is getting better than this. And our country is getting better than this. And so I just wanted to, I, I didn't, I just wanted, I did not want this event that Trump did to get passed by without some notice somewhere of, of those of us in the city taking offense to it and, and, and saying that we stand for something greater than that, more inclusive, understanding, and better than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the opposite member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Come on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.